I had our anniversary last August. We'd look at old fifty years ago how things have changed. Things we have now that we didn't have. Which you can't do, that microwave, phones.
Computer TV.
Computer TV.
Well, it's really charming.
Computer?
Yeah. The flat screen TV. Computers used to look like big tubes.
Cell phones were those big walkie talkie looking thing?
Yes.
When they first came out?
Fascinating. I had somebody call me today. She says, who is this? She wrote on there. She said that was her father's.
Your phone number?
Yeah, and I've had my phone number forever. It was a big thing of hers. Sam McFisher had been and had his phone number on it, but I've had it in ten years.
That's weird.
It was. You don't know what scam or what anymore.
Yeah. You get all kinds of calls. From people you don't recognize the number.
Mm-hmm.
I don't even, I don't answer them.
Yeah, I just.
Wait and see if they go to voicemail or not.
Yeah.
If they don't, it's like, well. I guess that was a scam call.
Sometimes you get so many jump calls. And then I like like when you have a space or something. They keep popping up things right on top of what you're trying to read. And you push it off to two seconds later.
Yep. You have to X stuff off and then when you get ready to push, yep. Shifts over so that you hit on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I scrolled through and only like five pages is like. It's the first time we haven't had a hundred plus pages of agenda. Actually find the legislation.
Might as well be shorter than last time. There's a lot more stuff I thought over here. A whole lot of beautiful planning.
Yep. All good.
Oh, I didn't see it. Where was it? Okay. I saw twenty twenty-three and then other dates.
So I think the twelve, twenty twenty-four got put in wrong spots. The next one about it like, gee, were you twenty twenty-five in your?
Here for agenda shit?
But in.
No, I forgot to print them. There's only two days.
It's in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, it's twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. All in the same binder.
Did we put out number? We approved. Uh, thirty forty thousand?
Andy couldn't find it, but first up, this year is mixed. So everything he said except at the meeting, I did not end up going out of there with my. Department head reports from the September meeting. And I don't know if you have that or Andy took them.
Uh, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this is.
Yes. Okay.
I don't know if it was.
Well, they could.
Additional gator, whatever.
Just bring them next time. Think of it, or. They could probably send some. Sure, they planned it and. I think we'll be on school.
Are they there? On the ground?
Yeah.
I don't know. This was out there.
I thought I saw you watching.
Well, I was putting the reports in the notebook for the public service.
Uh-huh.
And everything goes on this last meeting, you had such time. Hospital and everything.
Oh, yeah, wow.
Yeah, I don't know.
There, everybody's home and trying to get them set up. Home visits, physical therapy and nursing. Uh, I think that's all coming except for wheels.
She got out of hospital that day.
Yes, she did, thank goodness.
Oh, yeah?
I know you're all worried.
Oh, and of course, that meeting last.
Are they just sitting out there?
I had to get back in there and spend the night with my dad because he couldn't stay by himself.
Sorry?
She got out of there next day, I think. Or maybe Saturday, I don't know.
Maybe so.
Don't run into you after a while.
Yes, I have no idea which way is up.
Call the meeting in order if everyone could please stand for the pledge allegiance and then a moment of silent reflection, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First, we have roll call.
Councilman Eve?
Here.
Councilman Head. Councilman Head.
You say hit?
Hit.
Yes, here.
Councilman Jackman?
Here.
Councilman McDaniels?
Here.
Councilman Salt?
President.
Councilwoman Tray.
Yes.
President Peters?
Here. Did everybody take a look at the October second minutes? Any corrections or concerns? Hearing that in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. No public hearings tonight, uh, no communications or announcements. We do have, uh, three audience concerns tonight. First up, we have Deana Pierce. If you could, uh, state your name and address for the record, please? Yeah, at the podium, please.
Make sure that mic's on, please.
Yes, okay. Hi, my name is Deana Pierce. I live over on Sheffield Boulevard. And I'm here to talk about the recycling, the proposal to get rid of the recycling program. Uh, full disclosure, I am an employee of Ohio EPA. So I want to kind of bring a broader perspective. Um, you know, I, I live here, I pay the water and sewer and trash rates. I fully am back, backing you as far as saving money and being as efficient as possible, so keep that in mind. I do know that every solid waste management district in Ohio, and I think there are sixty-six, has to have, they're mandated to have a recycling plan. And they, they are not dictated how that works, but they have to work with their local communities to have a recycling plan in place. That's mandated. I will also tell you from experience that landfills fill up. If, if there's no recycling, that means more waste is going into the landfill. Landfills have a square foot footprint, including airspace going up vertically. Once those fill up, the Cherokee Run landfill where our trash goes up and around Bell Fountain, I don't know if they're landlocked, but they'll have to buy land next to the landfill to expand it, or they have to close that. And then they go find another place to build a landfill. And if you don't like solar farms or data centers on farmland, I guarantee you aren't gonna like the local farmland becoming a landfill. And I can tell you from multiple occasions, the most, one I'm one most familiar with is up in Fostoria. I don't know if any of you have a relationship with any, the mayor or councilman up in Fostoria, but the wind waste landfill there, formerly known as Sunny Farms, is about seven miles from Fostoria. The waste, type of waste they take, uh, creates hydrogen sulfide gas. They can smell it in Fostoria. That's several miles away. It's a rotten egg odor. You don't want that. Most landfills aren't that bad. But what I want to get across is there needs to be a recycling program because we don't want our landfill to fill up faster because that just means you got to put a landfill somewhere else. We don't want that in our community. I also want to see if you have something considered in place. I get that maybe it's too expensive to run the trucks for the, you know, the curbside recycling. Do you have a place here where we can drop off recycling? And it's important, when I say that, to say that Monday through Friday, I'm working in Columbus. I got home from work right at six o'clock today. There's either gonna have to be evening hours or weekend hours for those of us who want to continue to recycle to drop our stuff off because I'm not taking a vacation day to go drop off recycling once a month or something. That's, that's, that's not feasible. I prefer, I'm as lazy as the next person. I prefer the curbside. If you need to increase rates to make that continue, I can't, can't speak for anybody else, I'm okay with that because I know the importance of conserving landfill space for the future. It's easy to think short term. And I respect that you guys want to save money, uh, my tax money. But I encourage you to think long term. Landfills fill up. They have to be built elsewhere if we're gonna continue throwing trash away. I also know, and you guys know, you pay by the ton. So all of our trash trucks that run up to, to Logan County to dump trash, they're get, they get weighed. And they charge however many dollars per ton. Ohio EPA gets about nine dollars of that money for our operations. But they might charge sixty dollars, eighty dollars, I don't know what it's up to, per ton. So you're still paying. The more trash we throw away, the more tonnage we're disposing in the landfill, the higher our fees are gonna be to dispose of, of the trash in the landfill. So wherever you guys decide to go with this, I hope you keep it. But consider the bigger picture, the longer term picture because kicking the can down the road, filling up landfills, doesn't help us. And I, I like to preserve farmland, so let's not fill them up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I'd said before the meeting, I, I hope you share that information with Steve Saltzman, too. I think that'll help. He's new in the job as safety service director, and I think this will help him at least come to some decisions. So I appreciate that.
Up next, we, up next, we have Isaiah Freeland. State your name and address for the record, please?
Hi there, it's actually both of us. Katie Wilson, I'm speaking on behalf of LABC. I am the current president, co-chair of the board. He is the vice president, co-chair of the board. So we're here to voice a couple of concerns about our overflow parking. Um, so if you're not familiar with Burr Wheeler, it's right off of Tolland. And across the street is where our overflow parking used to go. So last year, we ran into a lot of issues. Um, it's being used for construction right now. It's been completely taken up. It's made our lives very, very difficult with scheduling. And you've got parking down Tolland and on every edge of the street. I've talked to neighbors. I have spoken with everybody. Um, we're looking to see if there's a plan in place to, for next season, get whatever is going on in the overflow parking out so we can continue our season for our community. And that's our plan. Um, we are new in this role. We are taking over the board completely. And we're trying to revamp things and we're trying to make this better for the community, especially with London growing the way it's growing. So we, we really need that overflow parking across the street from Tolland, and it's being taken up by construction equipment. Right now, it's filled with gravel, piles and piles of gravel. So we are just kind of looking for an estimate and, and just to put it out there that we, we, we need that parking. We are trying to really, really expand this program. Um, and it's very difficult to do when we have just one parking lot. So, a- and it's not convenient for parents, it's not convenient for police. Um, my fear is emergency vehicles having to go down the street when both sides of the street are completely compacted with cars because the overflow parking is taken up from construction. Merrimack is very much open. We don't use Merrimack much anymore at all. So we were just wondering if there, if we can find a solution to switch the storage of that construction equipment, the gravel, the piping, all of it elsewhere by next season. Because we, we are really trying to push, we've done a lot of events, we held a huge Wiffle Wall tournament, um, last weekend. We held a huge tournament game at the end of the season, but it's very, very much impossible to hold a regular season when we have no parking for parents and fans. And it makes our lives much more difficult. And this is a nonprofit organization that we work for and we dedicate our time to. So it just kind of escalates our time while we all work full-time jobs, trying to figure out schedules and trying to figure out how we can make our season better due to parking. Just parking alone. So we were just looking to see if we can put the word out there that if that excess parking could be moved elsewhere from the storage, it would be, it would take a big weight off of our shoulders.
Um, being a past board member of LABC, um, I know, I don't know if you know this, but we're in a major, doing a storm sewer, you know, project. I'm hopeful, I'm sure the city's hopeful that that project be completed before next spring.
So we heard that last year. That's the only reason we're here. Yeah.
But, I mean, it should be completed by then, and I'm sure all that stuff will be out there for parking.
Okay, that's what, that's all we're trying to secure is that we have that parking because it created just a nightmare last year because we were having to schedule games like crazy schedules.
And that was the area that the project was in, so I mean, it made sense to put the.
Right, right, yeah.
Put the stage materials there for that project. Like I said, I'm hopeful that that project will be completed by then.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Now, I know you mentioned, pardon me, I know you mentioned Merrimack, that you would like to see this equipment move down there so that it's not there. Do you realize that there, they built some T-ball fields out there at Merrimack?
We do. Um, and we, we actually get charged for having teams play on those fields, um.
On those fields or the big fields?
On Merrimack.
On those little fields?
Merrimack in general.
Because they have the little clover leaf back there, they put the fields in.
Merrimack in general, we get charged anywhere between a hundred and two hundred for using those fields.
Per?
Per whatever, it could be at practice.
Yes, all the ball fields in the city, you, you gotta rent.
We maintain Burr. We don't maintain Merrimack. So we maintain Burr, so we actually contract out for landscaping, we contract out for everything when it comes to Burr. We have nothing to do with Merrimack when it comes to the upkeep of it. So Merrimack is a very different story when it comes to LABC.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the city owns that, the city owns Burr Wheeler?
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
And the city owns the parking across the street.
Correct, yep.
Which, you know, he was a board member. I've been down there for many, many years, so I've, you know, it was always convenient to have that parking. So I really do hope that they get that cleared up.
Yeah, that's all we're asking for.
One way or the other, yeah. It's very, it makes it much more convenient for you and everyone else.
Yeah, because scheduling last year was crazy. Um, just trying to make sure we stagger things the way they need to be staggered so that we don't really like overflow it. And then that turns into, I mean, you, you talked about, in Ohio season with rain that was out of control, with fields that are just not in good shape to be playing games most of the time. Um, so you're already short on game, like with, uh, scheduling wise. So having that overflow parking would eliminate at least that issue while we work on other issues. And it would really, and like I said, like it's, I was looking at it one day and I was like, okay, so what happens if like a fire truck or an ambulance needs to fly down through here? Are they supposed to dodge cars that are parked on both sides of the street? So that was, that, that's just our concern as well as trying to just make this happen for the community as well.
Well, that was new information. I knew that they were, since they've upgraded the fields, that they were charged for that. I didn't realize they charged for those T-ball fields that were really never really used. I mean, they were there, but they looked pretty rough.
Yeah. So I can tell you on behalf of LABC, we are looking for community help at this point. Um, we're in the midst of raising money to renovate Field Three, which is known as the T-ball field now. We want to make it an actual size field. Um, it would be used for eight and ten U, so you'd have coach pitch and kid pitch on that field. Um, renovations right now, we're looking at roughly sixty thousand dollars to do that field. Um, I know we have a couple people, once we started reaching out, you know, being nonprofit, that said, here's a couple grand to get you started. It's not a whole lot, but I know we're trying to renovate a lot. It's, it's not a small project. It's a big project. Um, so any community support would be greatly appreciated when it comes to this. And if you look at kids this day and age that are playing sports, um, the motto is, I look good, I feel good, I play good. So if we can renovate a baseball park to where these kids feel good, they feel welcomed. I mean, like you said, you were on the board. I played down there, I started baseball down there when I was ten years old. So now it's time to revamp London, honestly. London needs a change. And if doing this field and doing new uniforms and this, that, and the other that we're looking at doing this year, if that's it, here's the change. It's coming.
Yep.
Where are you gonna play T-ball then?
So right now, what we're looking at is using the three big fields for T-ball still as of right now because if not, we're gonna have to rent from Parks and Rec to go down to Merrimack and play down there. So right now, we still plan on doing T-ball at the, at Burr Wheeler.
And as of last year, with the scheduling changes, T-ball actually was playing on the bigger fields due to the scheduling. So, uh, we've seen that that does work because we, we had no choice, um, to get a season in because T-ball has the most teams when it comes to LABC. And it's very difficult to spread them as thin as eight U, ten U, twelve U. So we were putting T-ball teams on the bigger fields already. Adapt and change, I guess, is what we're trying to do.
Well, there's a lot less teams now than there used to be. Would you have three ten U teams?
What, this past year? Uh, six.
Or maybe it was twelve, twelve U's?
Twelve U had a lot fewer.
Three twelve U.
Yeah.
Yeah, three, yeah.
Yeah, three twelve U, we had six ten U, uh, nine eight U, and I don't know how many freaking T-ball.
Thirteen or fourteen T-ball.
Thirteen or fourteen T-ball.
Yeah.
Lots of T-ball.
Yeah.
So we did end up putting them on the bigger fields with scheduling. Um, we've adapted to a new schedule to come down to scheduling, like our games and everything. But while we work with this new scheduling program that we're changing over to, it would be great to actually have that parking so we can, you know, tell them, yes, you can schedule this many games on this day, like, because they're gonna help do the scheduling for us because there's only six of us on the board at this point. There's six of us on this board. So it's, it's quite difficult when all six of us, it's six or seven?
Seven now.
Seven now, sorry. We just got a new one. Hooked them and synced them. Um, there, sorry. There's seven of us now, and we all work full-time jobs. So we do this completely on the side. And it's very difficult. So we would like for that parking to be available just because we want to be able to tell this new scheduling program like, hey, yes, you can do this on this night. Have at it. And not spread all of these teams, three hundred kids through a certain time slot each night.
So I know one thing that we implemented this past season was eight U traveling. So yes, it's coach pitch, but we wanted to get these kids in the mindset of this is baseball, it's not, we're gonna play at the same park every night. So with T-ball, T-ball can stay down there. We're not gonna travel with T-ball. It's a whole different beast. Um, eight, ten, and twelve U, we're gonna travel. And we joined a new league, the Mad Pick League last year. Um, so we traveled no farther than, I think, forty-five minutes. It wasn't a terrible distance to travel, so.
And with that comes other teams coming into London as well. So we had Mount Sterling, um, Sayoto.
Yep.
And Wes Jeff.
Wes Jeff.
So then you bring other fans as well. So now you've got people coming from out of town as well, so it, it makes it very complicated for us to do this when we've got, we're, we're in a league where we're expanding and we're letting the kids, like, we're, we're bringing attention to London and we're trying to expand our league and it's not just LABC anymore. So we did that last year with three other teams. Um, not sure what we're doing right now, pretty sure we're staying with Mad Pick.
Probably expanding.
And then possibly expanding because London is expanding. London is expanding big time. And so we, we're just trying to adapt with the city as well. And we, we just need the resources to do that. And that's what we want to see. That's our point.
Good luck with that.
Yep. I know what it's like to be a board member. Time you put into it, especially field maintenance and building and all that.
Oh, yeah.
I get it, especially with travel and all that, so wish you guys luck. And like I said, hopefully the storm sewer project be, should be completed by then.
Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Yep.
You had another concern, right?
Yeah. So, south side of town. I live everyone Stewart. Um, the streets just got done. They look like crap. I don't know what company did them, that the city did them. They look terrible. Is that the gravel? Yeah. It's, uh, we had service meeting Tuesday and the plan is to mar- micro finish those, which is a, I think that's what it's called.
Micro surface.
So it's, there, it'll be surfaced over top of that. If you go down, um, this is street.
Olive.
Is olive done?
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna look similar to that. Okay.
So it's.
It's not gonna be left.
Chip and tar right now?
Right, it's the chip and tar, I guess is what they call it.
Cherry got done yesterday, I think.
Yeah, so if you look at some of the other streets, that's, it'll be finished way back. Okay.
For some reason, they have to do the chip and tar and then wait, is it two weeks before they put the, the other surface on top? But it should look a whole lot better once that other surface gets put on there.
Okay, because I'm, I'm driving down the road, I'm like, there's white spots here, there's dark spots, this looks great, and this looks like crap. I'm like, what is this? Like, is that what my tax dollars are going to? Yeah, they're gonna seal it. Okay. All right, I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Raymond Anthony.
Your what?
State your name and address for the record, please?
Raymond Anthony, five two one Eaton Street. Uh, tonight before the city council, you have the same resolution for the seventh time, a resolution to abolish the City of London recycling program. Whether it gets passed, whether it's abolished or not, is your, and I wish city, I wish the city administration was here because I'd ask the same question to them. My question to you, city council members, is your vote based on the future of our trash hauling? Is it, do you want it to keep it in Is it, do you want it to keep it in the City of London or do you want to privatize it? And I've been coming to a lot of these meetings for the last three or four years. And I observe and I listen to a lot of things that go on. My personal feeling is the water and sewer program in the past was running to the ground to where the City of London gave all their problems over to Mid-Ohio. And I feel that down the road, that I believe the result, or the trash hauling has become another example of running that program into the ground to where, uh, they don't want to deal with it anymore and privatize it.
I know I want to keep it.
Huh?
I said, I know I want to keep it. I think the city needs to invest money into it to keep it running.
I just think that the City of London needs to keep hold of something that we can, um, at least be part of us. Because with Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer, I think a lot of you people, yes, you voted for it, but now looking back, I don't think it was the best decision at that time. And those are all my personal opinions.
I know that, uh, Steve Saltzman, Safety Service Director, um, I know he's looking into everything, seeing where we're at, where the sanitation department's at.
Well, yeah, and I was gonna ask him tonight if he was gonna show up. Looking into the future, is the decision to keep it here in London or to privatize it? Is it gonna be largely on economic or financial numbers? I know a lot of times that's the bottom line, but sometimes I feel that, that maybe it should be kept here rather than privatized, because once it's privatized, you'll never get that back. Just like the water and sewer, you'll never get that back to where the City of London runs it. And I'm just, I have a gut feeling that's what's gonna happen down the road. That eventually this is gonna come up and it's gonna be, the city administration is gonna come before city council to privatize it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And as, as councilman, or pardon me, council president Peter said, you know, we're still waiting for Mr. Saltzman to work on this. And I'm, and I'm glad we didn't jump into anything yet. You know, we could have, we could have just voted this down and pushed it off and weighed on it, which would have been fine. But I think that we have to have that determination as the whole, the big picture, you know, what's gonna happen, not just for the recycling. So hopefully that's those, that information's being gathered and hopefully we'll be able to make decisions on that.
Yeah, we did talk about it in service meeting also Tuesday and I think he's waiting on some feedback from Mid-Ohio as far as sanitation numbers go and, but we did talk about that topic.
And I realized that being here, the last couple of meetings, it's been talked about that if the City of London does keep the trash hauling, yes, there will be happy money appropriated to fix up the sanitation department's grabber. I understand that. And I don't mind spending wherever it comes out of general fund or whatever. I'm more concerned about not having a say in our trash.
As far as costs go, you mean, or?
Well, instead of privatizing, because now if you have a water and sewer problem, you gotta go to Mid-Ohio. And those people don't want to hear anything. They don't want to talk to you. They don't want to do anything. So you're left, I mean, you can't do, you can't work with the, with, with Mid-Ohio.
Well, you might want to call, call and talk to Steve Saltman, Saltzman about the, some of your concerns and he has a lot of information already. Besides just costs.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Saltzman is really working hard to lock down some prices to compare what we'll have to charge residents monthly to keep it in-house versus what we may, if it would be privatized, um, you know, what it would cost there. It's kind of difficult to get a bid from a privatized company unless we commit to doing away with our own trash service. So, um, Mr. Saltzman was in contact with Plain City, which just put their, they're going to privatize and put theirs out for bid. Um, and that should be fairly comparable to us, but it, it's probably gonna come down to a difficult decision about what's it gonna cost to keep our trash department in the city, you know, in-house, in the black? How much is our month, you know, our monthly fee gonna have to go up to? And then compare that to what it might be if we went with Rumkey or HW Man and Sons or someone else. And then the citizens, we're just gonna have to figure out what is most important to us. You know, the charge monthly or keeping it in-house even if it costs a little more. But Mr. Saltzman.
More one way or the other.
Yes, everything goes up. But he, he should have some, uh, some much better numbers for us very soon.
Okay, on to committee reports. Greg?
Well, nothing new for the Finance Committee. We do meet next Monday, October twentieth, five thirty, next door in the conference room. And we might have a first look at our budget, maybe. We will? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Brent?
Yeah, I attended, uh, Public Service and, uh, Public Safety Tuesday. I'll start with the, the, I have the, uh, Parks and Rec report here. And I have the, uh, revenue and expense report. It looks like they, uh, the expenses were a hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six and the revenue was sixty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine. And, uh, Park Avenue Merrimack Basketball Courts and Skate Park, the paving and striping is complete. And they still need to get to the, uh, the, uh, Skate Park reinstalled. And an additional twenty-five thousand was added to the cost of the project to fix the base layer. And they received estimates from Sports Gate to install two pickleball courts at Park Avenue. And that's about it for them. Then I have the, uh, Fire Chiefs report. And departmental EMS training, uh, case-based trauma assessment and management through Mid-Ohio. Departmental fire training, new part-timer orientation. They hosted several students for ride time from tolls. And provided EMS coverage for football games, participated in Skilled Trades Fair. Attended to Pumpkinpalooza, attended several touch a truck events, attended Safety Fair at Stanley. Attended birthday party for a young cancer victim. And they attended a Chamber of Commerce Fall Festival. That's all we got for him. Mr. Hayes was what made me read his report. Uh, for the, uh, there was three members present at the Public Safety Service Committee meeting. Uh, it's called Order at six oh five. They approved the minutes from September ninth. And Mr. Stahl will have the police report here soon. And we adjourned at six nineteen. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, I attended the Service Committee meeting this past Tuesday. We talked about the sanitation department and how to, whether that's sustainable or not, whether the privatize. And we also talked about pickleball courts, um, reduced from four to two. And they would be incorporated into the skateboard park and basketball court area. So rather than costing a hundred and forty thousand, that'll be approximately forty thousand for two courts instead of four courts. We did, we talked about also the traffic calming, uh, different neighborhoods requesting traffic calming devices. And, uh, the police are coming up with a criteria to kind of standardize where those could be placed so that they're not viewed as being preferential to certain areas of town. Uh, so that, that should be, um, set up by, or established by the end of the month or next month. And, um, the next meeting is November eighteenth at five o'clock in the meeting room next door. That's it.
All right, thank you. Shayna?
I don't have anything. Finance is meeting on Tuesday.
Thank you. John?
Public Safety Committee briefing from October thirteenth. The police facility construction is progressing and is about four weeks behind schedule due to the initial poor soil delays. Additional funding was requested at the last finance meeting and legislation was before council for the funding request of six hundred thousand. The funding would include the extra soil stabilization costs in addition to reinstating floors, lighting and garage doors that were removed to meet the nine point three million initial cut-off. A draft basic traffic calming plan was created for review and discussion. The K-nine unit attended an advanced week-long training in Indiana with other local K-nine teams. We have put on hold the hiring of the second support specialist position at the direction of the administration. LPD participated in the London School Safety Committee meeting, conducted traffic control for the LHS homecoming parade and attended the safety communities, safe communities. Think Fast, Drive Safely event held at LHS. LPD provided traffic control and an escort for the London Post Office's memorial tribute for long-time long mail carrier Leroy Payne. LPD participated in an OVI sobriety checkpoint held on Lafayette Street, conducted by the Ohio State Patrol. One OVI arrest was made by the officer. He, he drove up drunk. Several officers have completed a course of training, an active shooter rescue task force. This training takes officers to the next step in an active shooting response by working with medics to get help to injured victims quicker. It does not change the priority of a law enforcer's response to contain the aggressor. Stats, through three quarters of twenty-five, fifty-nine, five thousand, eight ninety-nine calls for service, four hundred and thirteen incident reports, one thousand eight hundred and eighty traffic stops, four hundred and eighty traffic citations, one thousand two hundred and fourteen traffic warnings, sixty-nine OVI incidents and one hundred and eighty-three traffic crashes. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes, um, I attended the Public Service Committee and Committee meeting and I have the Street Department's, um, report. They had their, their usual busy time, um, all over town doing all sorts of things. Bill Long did bring up, uh, that we've been getting a lot of complaints, just like Mr. Isaiah said, um, about the resurfacing of some of the city streets. They, they think the chip surface is all that we're doing. Um, so he did go over that, uh, said the microseal finish will be added later and there is some dura-patching going on. Um, the contract with Ohio Edison has been signed to install the two street lights near East High and Kenny Boulevard. Um, and they had a rather exciting event where there was, I guess, a dispute between neighbors. And one neighbor dug up part of a storm sewer pipe and put a log in it and sat it on fire. And so that was some excitement for the Street Department, but they're, they're, they're getting to the bottom of that. And, um, I guess the fellow who did that will be paying to replace it. And that's all that we had.
All right, thank you. On to city official reports. Can I, you have anything? All right, thank you. On to old business. Up for seventh reading, Resolution one fifty-nine dash twenty-five. Can I get motion to read by title number?
Sir moved. A second.
We're just gonna leave this on. Uh, Mr. Saltzman's gonna make sure that there's a place to recycle the days at times and locations before we vote on this.
We, we did talk about some of the issues with having a, a drop-off spot. People tend to drop off trash there and a variety of stuff that can't be recycled, which contaminates the recycling, which creates a problem with, um, I think when the, um, donation bins were around town, people would end up dumping all kinds of trash in those areas. So that was one of the concerns with having a, a drop-off spot.
Yeah, and our sanitation department has a lot more concerns than the recycling, believe me. It's gonna take stacks of millions to get that thing up operational sustain.
So to ask the question a little bit further, because there's some new information here, is are we leaning towards getting rid of the recycling program and, and, or is it still up in the air? I mean, are we leaning towards that because he's looking into stations to do that or?
Mr. Saltzman's gonna make sure that before we, uh, end the recycling, that there's a place here that people can recycle.
Instead of, so doing that, instead of adding money to this and keeping the program, I mean, is that?
That, that was an option. It wasn't really determined that's what would happen.
Okay, we're not really leaning that way yet. It's just, that's an option. Okay.
Intended for, to help, you know?
Right.
What was discussed was some of the issues with the recycling, which right now I think the city's paying eighteen hundred dollars a month for recycling. And about half of that can't be recycled because it's contaminated. So that's a twenty-four thousand dollar cost every year that's not necessarily being used as it should be or could be. And then the drop-off spots, the issue was people dumping trash there or whatever and contaminating those materials.
And we're gonna need pushing two hundred thousand for the electric and a hundred and fifty for repairs.
The transfer station would need to be upgraded as far as electric goes. Um, an additional compactor would need to be installed.
Two half-million dollar trucks.
Right, and additional trucks. Um, so they're, and I think the sanitation department's roof is in disrepair and needs fixed. So there's a lot of costs involved in retaining the sanitation department. So, um, Steve had said that, you know, if we're looking at retaining that service, it likely be an increase, a substantial increase in costs, um, not related to the recycling, but I mean, just sanitation in general, like keeping it here.
And going up every year also.
Right.
After that.
So, I mean, there's, just waiting on him to get some numbers from Mid-Ohio, since they're handling, handling the sanitation stuff right now.
He is working.
Mid-Ohio.
Mid-Ohio's only, they only do the.
The billing.
Billing.
Yeah.
Okay.
He was also gonna clarify the situation if we would have a recycle, one of those dumpsters where you put the glass in one spot, the plastic in another and the paper in another. Um, what are our options with that? What would that cost? Where would we place it?
The time and the days and the location.
Yeah.
How many locations?
So he was gonna get some answers on that and discuss it further at the next, um.
There's a lot to trash.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion on this? Okay. Up for second reading, Resolution one eighty-six dash twenty-five. Can I get motion to read by title number?
Sir moved. A second.
So this also has to do with sanitation. Uh, we actually have to pay Rumkey to take our trash from here. Uh, it's the recycling that goes up towards Bell Fountain, but I don't think our trash goes there. I'm not sure. Does it? But we do pay, we, we, so someone questioned this on, of me the other day. So we pay our bills to have our sanitation department come pick it up from our house and take it out to the, to the, the transfer station at our landfill station. Uh, but then we pay Rumkey to take that someplace else. So those costs have increased by eighty thousand dollars. If I, if I heard that correctly or remember that correctly from this point last year, has that, has that changed at Ole Miss Auditor?
Um, I haven't looked at, like, currently, but yes, about, last year we spent a total of four hundred and one, four, four and one thousand for the whole year and as of the end of August, we were at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So it has increased significantly.
Increased by eighty-eight thousand over last year. Yep. So this was the number that the auditor, uh, brought to us. There was some money that was encumbered. So she felt that this would get us through the rest of the year and that hasn't changed.
And a lot of that expenses from the contamination and the recycles, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
They have to pay more for it to haul out this trash.
Yeah, well, so, so, so that's back to that discussion also. If somebody throws dirty diapers in a recycling bin, it, that whole bin is no good. And it goes into that bin at the, down at the plant. And, you know, we have to pay for regular trash removal at that point because it's not used properly. So that's part of the cost too, yes. So this is the second reading. I will say this, that even though we do, we do not have an emergency, we do, we can, uh, move to, I will move to suspend the three reading rule. We can, if we wish to do. move to, I will move to suspend the three-reading rule, we can, if we wish to do that, if we vote on that, it doesn't make this any more or less of an emergency what it is, it would just clear up the funds in thirty days instead of another reading. So I moved that we suspend the three-reading rule on this.
Second?
Yes.
Mr. Salt?
Yes.
Ms. Crim?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Yes. I move to adopt.
Second?
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Red?
Yes.
Ms. Jack, Ms. Crim?
Yes.
Mr. Salt?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution one eighty-six dash twenty-five has passed, there's no new business, on to Roundtable, Lisa, do you have anything?
I don't have anything today.
John?
I don't have anything also.
Shannon?
Uh, Eighteen Eleven is sponsoring a booze and brews for the first time, that'll be on Friday, October thirty-first, um, to, I think they're, uh, similarly gonna have some little cards where you can do a walkabout tour, visit some of the, um, drinking establishments on Halloween, um, also at the, um, Eighteen Eleven is engaged now in the planning for Old Fashioned Christmas, uh, we had a pretty big success with it last year, we're hoping to make it even better this year, so we're in the full throes of the holiday season, so get out there and explore some local businesses.
All right, thank you, Andy?
Uh, I wanna thank everyone who's here showing an interest in what's going on in the city or watching. Um, I think this is the last meeting we have before the vote on November fourth, so get out there and vote, or vote early if you're so inclined. Uh, service meeting is November eighteenth in the meeting room next door, five o'clock. That's it.
Thank you, Brett?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, and, uh, hopefully I'll know more tomorrow about the recycling issues, or the situation with locations and all that. And you're right, I think in a couple of weeks, we all get our report card, don't we, here? That's, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Greg?
Uh, just to make sure Shannon's on the right page, cause she said Finance was next Wednesday, and someone pointed out that it's Monday, so we just wanna make sure you attend Monday.
Did I say Wednesday? I don't have any...
Oh, Tuesday, oh, okay.
It said Wednesday, it's Monday.
It is Monday.
It is Monday.
It said Monday, so we're gonna Tuesday, Wednesday, Monday.
So what, it, it, well, just as clarification, it will be Monday, October twentieth, next door, so let's, let's make sure we get that out there correctly. And we are on the agenda for that, so we know it'll be recorded as long as I push the button the correct way. Uh, next item, uh, you, you talked about the, the booze and brews thing, and, um, and I had sent a message to somebody, and maybe you guys are doing it, I know that there's plenty of people that ride motorcycles, and they go on poker runs, and I seen where this little town did a poker walk, and they did the same thing, but you just walk from one establishment to the other in downtown, and that sounded like that might be a lot of fun and something you guys could do, so if you're not doing it now, hopefully you'll think about that. And I am the current president of the London Lions Club, we will have our third annual eyeball. This is called the Eyeball because we raise money to buy glasses for people in need in this county, in this, this town. So this is the third annual eyeball, it's gonna be October the twenty-fifth, next Saturday, from seven to eleven P M. It is a twenty-one-and-over event because we do have a, a license that we can sell liquid refreshments, adult refreshments that night to those that, that are inclined to have those. And if you're interested, just show up at the Dallas Helsler Building on October twenty-fifth, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Sure moved.